In the special session which was held January 24, 2011. Have a motion to accept those minutes?
Yes.
Accepting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. We accepted the minutes, thank you. I'm not in receipt of any communications. Do we have any other communications?
I would like to reappoint two members to the Athens Board of Zoning Appeal. John Golsey and Greg Lovell. Their term expires on the 31st, their term expired on the 31st of January. And both would like to stay on the board.
Mayor Wild. I'd like to thank them for their service. I know both of them have been on for at least two terms, I believe. And I'm glad we're going to get this done because I think I got an email from John Golsey. The meeting is tomorrow and him being a stickler for the rules says, you know, I better get appointed before then. So, and I think they've done a good job, so.
All those in favor of reappointing these two gentlemen to the Board of Zoning Appeals, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Thank you. They are appointed and will be legal for the meeting tomorrow. Thank you. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wild.
Really not a lot. Let's see, just two things I do want to mention. One is that there will be that public open house. That will be Wednesday, the 9th, between 4:00 and 5:30. This is for getting some public input on the Oxbow Bridge, which is the upper bridge on Richland Avenue. They have some tentative drawings, schematic or rather artist renderings. I'm not really sure what else will be there except I think that they're just getting some input. This is no different than when we did the roundabout and the lower bridge, Richland Avenue Bridge. The anticipation is this will go through, be constructed in 2012, but it's always, the design engineers have to start rolling right now, so the idea is to get some public input. So that's between, be down at the front conference room in City Hall, first floor, and as I say, 4:00 to 5:30. I'm not sure of all the things that will be there, but you'll get some input. The other one, of course, is that there is a Athens Percentage for Art Committee that's going to be coming onboard for the tunnel at the roundabout. They're looking for artists, local artists, to submit some concepts, I believe. Submit it before do it, of course, so we don't want to see any graffiti there. I shouldn't say that even. The deadline for that is March 4th. You can find it on our city website if you really want to find out.
Thank you.
And I just want to put the word out for that. And that's all I really have.
City Auditor Kathy Hecht.
Thank you. Wonderful. I have a few things I'd like to address tonight. First of all, I'd like to address the editorial and the messenger on Sunday. And while I know we all support their support of us getting some help with purchasing the ladder truck, I also, I want to make it clear that the $70,000 that we get as a support payment from University Courtyard, in our contract it's pretty clear that that is not to be taken as a payment in lieu of taxes. However, it is a payment, but we don't get to keep all of that $70,000. Seventy percent of that goes to the Athens City School System, so we get about $20,000. And that, of course, is an estimate because it is a formula and can change from year to year. In 2009, we got about $68,000. We didn't get a payment last year, so it will probably be around $70,000 and certainly not more than $75,000 again this year, and hopefully we'll get the back payment soon. I know Service Safety Director Paula Mosley has been working on that. Secondly, I would like to talk about, and I handed out packets to everyone on council and the mayor and the treasurer. I would like to address the vehicle use. There was an article in paper about what the county is doing recently to address take-home vehicles for the county, and I just want to let council know, if they don't already, and anyone else who might be interested, that the city auditor's office has been tracking take-home vehicles since before I started in office. And as is reported, the IRS considers those taxable fringe benefit unless they are emergency vehicles. So I have listed here, excuse me, 2010, '09, and '08, the people taking home vehicles and the number of days taken home. As you can see, the changes are dramatic from three years ago to now. Although there were more people taking cars home in 2009, the hours were much less than 2008 that we had to account for. And we did report all of this to the IRS. We went from five people and 821 days in 2008 to nine people, 161 days in 2009, and three people, or two people with three hours in 2010. So I think council should be pleased with these results because of their efforts to control this. Anyway, I just thought you might want to know where we are on that. Okay, next page in the packet. Next I'm going to report on my office. I've never done this, but I thought there's a lot of information that we have up there that you might be interested in. So I had the administrators in my office prepare reports. The first one prepared by the payroll administrator, Kristy Hook, who also tracked the vehicle use in the city. And I promise I'm not going to read everything on every page, but I have four separate reports, and I'll go through some of the highlights. Each pay, we process approximately 250 timesheets and write approximately 280 payroll and deduction checks. An average payroll for the city is $355,000. Last year, there were 7,536 payroll and deduction checks written. Gross payroll for 2010 was $9,587,000. We have 315 employees, we had for 2010, which are broken out for you by full-time, part-time elected officials and also by departments. So we sent out a total of 315 W-2s for 2010. There were 118 employees who received longevity checks for 2010. Total longevity paid by the city was $273,777. There were 50 employees who received holiday checks for 2010. That total pay was $107,833. The top 20 wage earners for 2010 are listed. Twelve are in the police department, six in the fire department, the other two are the director of Public Works and the mayor. Once a month, we upload the pension reports for PERS and Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund for all employees. Every quarter, we process reports from the federal government, state government, and the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services. Once a year, we process reports for the Bureau of Workers Compensation and pay that bill. Every pay, we email accrual reports to each department so they know how many vacation, sick, and comp days their employees have. And we maintain all payroll files for every city employee in our office. The next page is the Accounts Payable Report presented by Heather Barnhart. We processed 1,377 purchase orders, 5,987 vouchers, 5,036 checks were issued for a total of $11,655,834, which does not include payroll. We sent out 61 1099s to vendors. Heather also tracks the uniform purchases for 137 city employees for the city and has to classify them as taxable or non-taxable because a lot of their purchases are taxable fringe benefits, just as take-home vehicles for non-emergency employees. We post interest to 33 different funds and revenue to all funds as we receive it. The Administrative Assistant Report was prepared by Leanna Woods, and she is, one of her main duties is tracking all the capital assets for the city, and this is very important for our audit reports because all that information has to go in there. For the year 2010, the auditor's office entered 178 fixed asset forms with a total value of $525,267. 178 fixed assets, eight were vehicles, and 170 are classified as equipment. Throughout the year, 21 assets were disposed of, traded in, or sold. The total cost of these items is $50,159. The total disposable amount the city received for these items is $2,000. All city contracts, employee bonds, construction maintenance bonds, vehicle titles, license plate registration information, project paperwork, and ordinances are tracked by the auditor's office administrative assistant. She is also responsible for tracking 78 city-owned properties and working with the law director's office to request tax-exempt status for these properties and paying property taxes. The auditor's office and income tax retention schedules are also handled by the administrative assistant. This is important because of the volume of paperwork that we produce and the regulations for disposal of that. We have to have approval of that from the records commission to dispose of any of our paperwork, even if it's on a schedule. The administration, the administrative assistant is also responsible for processing the health and life insurance bills for all city employees and updating, changing, terminating, et cetera. She is also the main backup for all of the other administrative assistant positions in our office, and she has been instrumental this year in coordinating the installation and technical support of the income tax withholding tool that we now have up and running. Finally, the Income Tax Department Year-end Report, prepared by the Tax Administrator Sharon Smith and the Administrative Assistant Tina Timberman. 3,133 returns were processed, 908 declaration payments were processed, 8,648 withholding payments were posted. Revenue received during 2010 for prior years, 1999 to 2009, was $152,062. Here, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the law director again and his prosecutors for all their help and support. Without them, we would not have collected all of those past due payments. We had gotten just over $100,000 in 2009 when we started that, and I thought that that would gradually go down, and I'm just very happy that we've actually increased our revenue from that this past year. 1,021 1099-G forms were processed. The court charged, we had court charges filed for approximately 35 taxpayers and resolved 29 of those. We had a total of 917 new accounts entered into the system. That's broken down to what kinds of accounts those were, but I think part of that is also a result of the contractor registration legislation that went into effect. We did add quite a few new vendors, local vendors in the city to that. The tax department, of course, was also involved in implementing the withholding tool for the online withholding filing. They also collected $272,149 in transient guest taxes for this year. And Sharon put on her report that as far as the state auditor's report, there were no fractions. So I didn't prepare a list for Ray and I. I think most of you know how hard Ray works, and I thought that was probably enough for one night. Thank you.
Thank you, auditors. There's some very interesting information. You gave copies to each of the council members.
Yes.
Copies could be available if somebody.
I do have extras. If somebody wants one, we can make more.
Okay, thank you. Treasurer Mary Ann Muthur.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to present the fourth quarter and final year end interest income report. It's attached to copies of the last three months' bank reconciliations, just for your reference. Now, the total interest earned for the year was $123,841.16, and if you'll notice, it's a bit shy of the projections, and one of the reasons, besides the fact that the interest rate continued to stay very low, was that no amount of interest at all. So there were not as many matured during 2010 as have matured in other years. Some of those will come due now in 2011, and will have the equivalent of two years' interest for that mature.
Thank you.
And just one other comment. We have, you've had a resolution about the bids going out to the banks for the, so that we can have our memorandums of understanding for depository agreements, and I do have several that I'll be reviewing and passing on to the law director in short order.
Okay, thank you.
So you should be able to finish with that quickly.
Those are resolutions that council passed several, a couple of weeks ago. Any questions for the treasurer, and I, questions for the auditor also, we forgot.
Sorry.
Yes.
One quick question. One quick question for each. On the auditor's report, this is on where we, let's see, I think I have the right title of the Administrative Assistant Year Review 2010. Just a question of need better understanding that you said throughout, about 15 lines down, throughout the year, 21 assets were disposed of, traded in, and sold. The cost of the items was $50,000, but the amount we see received for it is $2,000.
I'd say that would be comparable to our ladder truck, which is going to cost us over $1 million. If we sell it, we've been quoted $30,000 to $60,000.
Okay, so the original cost of those items.
Was $50,000.
Was $50,000. When we finally disposed of them, we got $2,000.
Right.
Okay.
But we have, on all of our disposals, we have, we've kept them.
Oh, we've gotten our use out of them.
Yeah.
We have a truck right now that's falling apart, and it's probably worth nothing, but they were driving it through the last snowstorm, and the doors are falling off. And the cab is just kind of sitting on the frame there. They like the truck a lot, but it just is not going to work anymore.
And then, one question for the treasurer, and that is, so the report is, is that we collected $123,000 in 2010, although we had projected $158,000, and you said that some of the CDN dates have been changed, so we'll likely see revenue in 2011.
Yeah, some of that will come.
So some of it will come back, and do we know?
It all will come back, it's just on a delay at this point.
Right, and will it be more than what we collected in, it's just hard to tell, will it be more than what we collected in 2010? I guess my question is, what are the approximate projections, and will they go up some now that we're getting two years of income from the CDs?
I don't know. I'd have to work with that.
Okay.
But the accrued interest that, if they'd matured it one year, would have brought it to just about the projected figure, so.
Okay.
It's in the $35,000, $36,000 range.
Okay.
Okay, any questions? Okay. Law Director Pat Lang.
I have a little report to see, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all of us. Ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 0811, an ordinance authorizing design of the Carriage Hill Bridge Rehabilitation Project 261. Ordinance 0911. Councilmember Nysley.
Yes, Mr. President, I move to amend ordinance 0911.
Second.
And the purpose for amending this is to make sure that we're tracking this project correctly, and of the amount being authorized for the project right now, it's, some of it were funds that were authorized in 2008, so $19,502 of that ordinance needs to come out of fund, the 220 fund, rather than the 572 fund.
Okay. Any further discussion of that? Is there a second? I, yes, there was a second. All those in favor of the amendment as offered by Councilmember Nysley, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. So the ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Now we have ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 1011, an ordinance authorizing the filing of a or plural proposals with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. DOT Federal Transit Administration, FTA, as authorized under federal transit laws, as codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas, and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant application approval for the period from January 1, 2012 through December 31, 2012, introduced by Councilmember Nysley. That's a lot of stuff.
That's a lot of information, and the mayor's office has kindly produced some additional information, which I passed out prior to the meeting, the title of it being Exhibit F.3, the 2011 Operating Budget Form. And the top form is a summary page that I will walk through briefly and explain as best I can. We also have the mayor here and the auditor for assistance if we have additional questions, I think. Our revised total operating costs for this project, total operating cost is $521,000, of which maintenance costs that are capitalized are deducted from that amount, so the total operating cost is $480,000. And of that, then, we have fare box revenue of approximately $40,000, which takes the revised net operating expenses to $440,000. Moving on down the, that front page, if you'll look at the, highlight the non, the non-federal required share subtotal is $208,000, and then we also have the local cash certified, $107,350, and this is the amount that the city provides towards this project of operating the Athens Transit in the city for the year. And then we have eligible state assistance, and then also a disabled transit fair assistance program for other revenues and, or expenses, excuse me. So the revised net operating cost is $440,456, equalling, the expenses equalling the revenues. The second two pages of material gives you the operating budget for the, for our project, and the total expenses are $521,290. And I, rather than go over every last item on this, I'll just highlight it for you, but of that, there, $20,654 is designated for salaries, $11,487 for fringe. We have purchased transportation services, which is about the fifth line down on the second, the second page of detailed budget, and that amount is $470,736. And this is the amount that we contract with McDonald Transport for our Athens Transit System. And other costs, we have some advertising and then other costs of $9,100 for our total operating costs of $521,290.
Here?
Again, this is the operating budget for 2011. We're going to be looking at 2012, and shoot sooner or later. I think this year, I may be wrong on this, but this year we actually put out, we had to take a survey and see if any other companies want to participate in our service. We were working with McDonald Transport Transit for about three to four years, I think, I forget the turnover, before we, members laid law. We're also in discussion with Hapcap. They put a grant in, application. It's straight money for looking at services, in other words, analysis of bus systems. In particular, they're looking, of course, at the Go Bus and see if they, how they can fine-tune it, which is kind of early for them to do that. They're also looking at trying to do county-wide stuff. We're trying to piggyback with them and look at our system and see if we can approve upon it. And I'm actually approving on it in two ways. One is that there's a route, which we done, I think in 2005 or '03, I think, we looked at some of that. And again, this is a service that Department of Transportation, ODOT, will do for us. On the other side of it, the other thing to look at, and I'm just, it's in the form of the thing, is whether we really want to think about taking it over ourselves. There is always a profit margin within McDonald to do this. We're always short, as you know, by $100,000. Can we make it leaner, meaner, and better? I don't know, but that's one reason why we're having this discussion, see if we can get some technical assistance from ODOT to say, what do our costs look like? What can we improve, and what would it look like if we were changing the mix somehow? And I say the mix being either taking it in on ourselves to do it and/or look at, when we go out to bid for another company, what are those good questions we ask? What are the parameters we want to look at? I know most people would like to see a better system, but you can see the cost just for what we have right now, and how much we're able to get out of it. And I'm just giving you a heads up. It's far in the future, but at the same time, something to think about.
Remember, Nysley, did you have further?
No further comments. Any further questions from other council members?
I just want to say that the administration has expressed a strong support for our transportation system within the city, within the region, and I think council supports that also, so we'll be going ahead with this search for money. Ordinance 1111, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application and enter into an agreement for the fiscal year 2011 through 2012, Ohio Attorney General's Drug Use Prevention Grant, introduced by Councilmember Coon.
Thank you. This is a grant that we apply for annually, and it provides matching funds for the DARE officers' base salary. Currently, it's up to 50%, however, it could go up to 75% depending upon whether or not the state law has changed, and they're talking about doing that.
Will, will we know that by the time this ordinance is?
I don't think we will.
No?
No, but it doesn't, the ordinance doesn't actually say 50% or 75%.
Okay. Ordinance 1211, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for a community development block grant for calendar year 2012, federal fiscal year 2011, introduced by Councilmember Bane.
Mr. President, this is an annual effort that we have. Community development block grant funds are, according to nation cities, are at risk. So once again, we're working in a, an era, in an area of unknown, but right now, every year, we get about a certain block of money that comes by virtue of our population size, and we use it, have been using it to repair the infrastructure in close to neighborhoods. And so you might note that we're spending quite a bit of regular money plus CDBG money to redo the sewer lines on, the sanitary sewer lines on Mill Street, as well as repaving the streets, as well as having people do their sidewalks. So Mill Street should be really spiffed up thanks to this program by the end of the summer. I mean, it'll be a little bit of chaos while we're here, but this is actually going for the year, calendar year 2012, but we're starting it out now.
Mayor Wild.
Yes, we took the past two years and pooled them together for the Mill Street Project, sanitary sewer streets. I drove the streets, and I realized they do need it.
Yeah. I was there today also.
So, and again, this project's for this year. Next year, we don't have a project lined up yet. We'll have a series of public hearings coming up for this. We don't have a date set for that, but that will occur as well to look for projects. That's, that's a requirement for this. I think the previous one was for Herald Avenue, if you remember, fixing the Santa Storm Sewer in there, I believe, getting the, the intersection better configuration, widen the street, and taking the telephone pole out of the middle of it. If you remember, that was always intriguing geometry right there going around it. So there are projects that have been done in the past quite well, and we hope this will continue. It's a, it's a nice piece of change to get some of the projects done. A percentage of it does go to housing, equal housing and education as well. We usually use Athens, Hocking Perry County Community Action to do that outreach, community outreach. It's a small percentage, but it works. And that's all I really have on it.
Again, to make the point that this block grant has been very important in the infrastructure maintenance done by the city. Onto ordinance 1311, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $300,000 worth of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring and installing energy conservation improvements at the city's community, at the city's community center and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Bane.
Mr. President, I better ask first, are we supposed to suspend on this or no?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I don't believe we've started any of the work on the community center.
Okay. So 1311 is going to take care of the, make a down payment on energy conservation. Does strike me as strange, but it doesn't matter because it'll work. Strange that we're having one of our newest buildings have energy retrofits, but it does suggest that we have a big job ahead of us as this is implemented. This is the first part of a longer-term project that may or may not happen, but it certainly is one that will be.
but it certainly is one that will be pretty effective. So we have, we will be borrowing three hundred thousand and paying it out of recreation funds. I just want to make sure.
Moving on to ordinance fourteen eleven, an ordinance amending the two thousand and eleven appropriation ordinance, introduced by councilmember Bane.
Mr. President, this one, does this one need to get suspended? It's got the- By the end of the month? Okay. This has that eleven thousand dollars of the FEMA grant for fire supplies, as well as the CDBG revolving loan fund money. Okay, so I guess I kind of went through it already, but we have a, one of our ongoing adjustments to the two thousand and eleven appropriation ordinance. As you can see, we have to put out the front money for FEMA fire grant, which will get some needed equipment, and then five hundred and one thousand, five hundred dollars to the CDBG revolving loan fund, and increasing the appropriations by that amount. And we'll be probably suspending next time, or asking for suspension.
Mayor, do you have?
Well, again, the ninety percent of the FEMA grant will be reimbursed. This is for some teaching software, smart board for the fire department. And that was a grant that Chief Trox will put it in. The other one, the CDBG, of course, is revolving loan fund. It's new money going into our revolving loan fund. Actually, it's going to be lent out to the University Health Care Center for their internal equipment. We'll get the money reimbursed to us, and it will give us a chest, war chest of revolving loan fund money. Hopefully, that will remain in place. It's always iffy, because that's another, CDBG, of course, is another thing that's on the, on the chopping blocks, as well as the, I would call, transmutation of Department of Development that's occurring at these Columbus level.
But this is ours right now, right?
What?
This is ours.
It's ours right now.
We got, we're safe on this one.
I hope so.
This was actually done in two thousand and ten.
Right, we just forgot to put it, we estimated, the auditor's office estimated it in our resources with the county, but we forgot to put it in the appropriation ordinance.
So, yeah, this is assured, as assured-
We have this money in the fund.
We actually have it, okay. Great, okay. Moving on to a one-reading resolution, Resolution O five eleven. A resolution urging Ohio University to contribute funds to the City of Athens toward the purchase of a new fire ladder, introduced by councilmember, by all council members, but I believe councilmember Coon is going to speak?
Yes. Yes, I'm ready. Thank you. We are asking, this is a resolution at, well, first of all, I move to adopt Resolution O five eleven.
Second.
This is a resolution asking Ohio University to contribute toward the purchase of the new ladder truck, fifty thousand dollars a year for five years. I might point out that this, of course, equals two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it is less than one-fourth the cost of a new ladder truck. Also, by stretching it out for five years, this makes it easier for the university to pay it. As we have talked about the reasons that we are asking for their assistance in purchasing the ladder truck, because approximately eighty-five percent of the structures over three stories in the City of Athens are Ohio University structures, whereas the Athens City Fire Department's ladder truck must respond to all calls to structures that are three stories or over. Whereas response runs made by the Athens City Fire Department have increased significantly over the last years, with approximately one-third of the runs going to Ohio University structures. Whereas the safety of all the citizens of the City of Athens, the majority of whom are Ohio University students, is of paramount importance, and whereas the current fire truck is over twenty years old, and whereas the cost of a new ladder truck is one million, thirty thousand dollars, and whereas currently forty-six point nine-two percent of the property in the City of Athens is tax-exempt, and whereas impact fees received from the state are steadily decreasing, and whereas a precedent for such voluntary contributions for the purchase of fire trucks has been established by other universities, such as the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor. And I believe member Fall wanted to make some comments.
I do. I wanted to point out the editorial that Athens Messenger put in on Sunday, and I think that they had a really good message to say. Auditor Peck did talk about the seventy thousand, which is something that does not necessarily go to the city, but it's more towards the schools. But I think the main point here is, if all students, undergraduate, graduate, and College of Osteopathic Medicine students, which amount to approximately twenty-one thousand students, this would only come to, if they paid a fee per year, not even per quarter or per semester, it would come to two dollars and thirty-four cents per year. If only the seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-one students living in the dorms and on campus, it would come to six dollars and fifty-nine cents per student, per year, to pay for this, where they're getting a majority, or a major contribution from the taxpayers of the cities of Athens for fire protection. So we know, we understand that they are a major contributor to employment in the city. However, I think that it's important to recognize that this is a minimal amount of money per student, per year, especially when you give the idea that all the other revenues that are being asked of students, over five hundred dollars per year for entered collegiate athletics, that's now, right now, a big discussion point at the university. That this is minimal for the health and safety of many, many people, not only students, but, you know, employees, staff on the campus. So I encourage that the university takes this very seriously, and be a community partner, and step up and be a responsible partner in the community.
Thank you, members Coon and Fall. Any others? Yes, member Butler?
Thank you. I too would like to voice my support for passing this resolution. I wanted to mention too, something that I had, some research I had completed earlier this year, comparing other university towns, and I was able to come across some information on the internet, which indicated, again, as noted in the resolution, that this is not new, a new idea for university, universities to support their university towns. For instance, University of Michigan, we noted, contributed four hundred thousand dollars to the City of Ann Arbor to help purchase a fire truck. Hamilton College, which is in Clinton, New York, contributed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of a fire truck. Little Old Kenyon College in Gambiro Isle ponied up forty thousand dollars. Mammoth College in New Jersey, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the last one I was able to locate was Longwood University in Farmville, Virginia, and they contributed a hundred thousand dollars to their municipality. So again, I think this is something that isn't new. It's happening. And noting that there's a symbiotic relationship between the university and the city, it behooves both parties to work collaboratively on endeavors such as this. And noted in the resolution, the word "safety" is stressed. It's not always all about money, but it's offering safety to the people in our community. Lastly, I was just going to mention too, that I spoke with some students that live in the first ward, just sort of picking their brains on this topic and seeing their take on it. And, and they, they supported the university offering money to make the purchase possible. And they also said that they'd be willing to pay up to fifty dollars on themselves. They know that they're strapped for money as students, and the challenges that await them, and loans and whatnot, but when considering the idea of safety, to them, it was a no-brainer. So I do think there's support out there. I don't think that we're totally in the dark as council members here. I, like I said, I've spoke with students in my ward, the first ward, they pick their brains, and they support this. So again, I want to offer my support, and I know that, well, I'll just keep it simple. So I am offering my support on this, and by the way, forward.
Thank you, member Butler, for your research and your comment.
Yes, and I appreciate the comments of my fellow council members here. One of the things I think is important to members that we're one community. And both the university and the city as government entities in this town have the responsibility to protect the public safety. The university has their own police department, as does the city, but the university does not have a fire department or supplement the fire protection in the city. And for about, as member Fall pointed out, about the cost of a cup of coffee a year per student, they, for five years, they will help us purchase a piece of equipment that will be protecting students for the next twenty years. And so really, it's hopefully something that they can help, help us out with. We've done our best in these tough economic times to save the resources to be able to purchase this, and we're just not quite there yet.
Thank you. We have a resolution and a motion made and seconded to accept the resolution. Any other comments? All those in favor of accepting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Resolution passes. And who passes this on? The mayor's office? Oh, of course, our clerk does. Announcements and other business. We will be having committee meetings next Monday. Anybody interested in having a committee meeting?
Transportation?
Transportation.
I may need, we'll see. We have a meeting tomorrow, the next day. Pursuit of money.
Probably, I think, finance for sure. Finance and personnel?
Adam, we're going to committee this.
No?
And do we have community issues?
Community issue.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other business from council members? Now we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items that were not covered during the meeting. Anybody wish to speak to council? Raise your hand. Otherwise, we're going to move on to adjournment. We are adjourned.